Yeah, I remember because I was a part of it. So it went through. We went all the way through. Yeah, I remember because I was a part of it. So it went through. We went all the way through. We always. It was about this. It was about this.
Yeah, if you look, if you drive that vehicle. Uh, he was. Yeah, that's still Facebook. Facebook takes side. You're watching. You're watching. Oh, no. Because he explained everything. He explained to myself. I mean, I'm sure. I know. I know. I know. I know. Or nothing. Yeah. You should be going for a couple of years. You mean Ross? Ross. How would I get him? Ross is not in the information. Maybe in the annex. Yeah. What's on?
No.
You haven't taken yet.
No. He was no more.
Right. Okay.
I can text Josh. I can like text him.
Okay. Yeah, this week's fine.
Good to see you. Sometimes Josh knows more than. Your private. So why are you asking me those questions?
I forgot.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, January 20th, City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Hardy.
Here.
Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Um, Alderwoman Miller is absent.
Thank you. Uh, can Cub Scouts 351 please come up? They're gonna lead us in the pledges, uh, this evening. Right.
Cub Scout salute. Turn to the flag. If you're in uniform. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, guys. First item on the agenda is the public comment portion. Is there anyone that would like to speak, um, on behalf of items that are not on the agenda? Mr. Curry, you'll go ahead and speak at the discussion. Or actually during that item, sorry. Is there anyone else to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening? See none? Um, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Counsel, is there any items that are wanting to be pulled for separate consideration? Anyone?
Yeah, we're pulling.
Thank you. Anyone else? See none. I'm looking for a motion, uh, to approve the following consent agenda items, 5B through 5D. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Alderman Mahavik. Discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, the item that was pulled by Alderman Glad was 5A, resolution authorizing execution and submittal of the Mini Round Community Development Block Grant, uh, known as a CDVG funds application. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, just basically, uh, researching this, uh, a little bit. The, according to discussions I had with staff today, uh, the development block grant will pay for, hopefully, a hundred percent of this project. Is that true or not?
The eighty percent is the grant and then the intent of the twenty percent was covered by the pro bono services for Baxter and Woodman doing the design engineering.
I mean, more than anything else is, I don't feel that this project should be, uh, paid for by taxpayers or the users of the, uh, the source system and I just wanna be sure that, uh, if there is any cost to the city, that it has to come back to the council and, uh, it's just basically talking about approval of a resolution, but there's nothing in that resolution that states, uh, anything as far as the fact of what the city of McHenry would have to pay towards this project. And I just wanna be sure that with this resolution that we are not taking and using any, uh, taxpayers' money for this project.
That's, that's correct. From the city of McHenry, that's correct.
So, uh, as long as we're in the middle of the discussion, uh, I would just like to make a motion, uh, to approve the resolution that is before us with the caveat that, uh, any costs to the city, uh, for this project will come back to council for discussion and approval.
It works. Any other questions, comments regarding this item? See none? I'm looking for a motion to approve 5A as presented. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Santi?
Second.
Discussion? Alderman Glad?
Just a question I had is this, uh, are they looking at, uh, annexing into the city?
Uh, they're talking about it.
I mean, needless to say, um, it's more cost to them being outside the city that they'd have to pay the one and a half times rate, right?
Correct.
They come into the city that they're paying regular resident rates. Now, is this main and all that that's gonna be sizing up? I mean, are they looking at expanding that facility? To the south or?
Not.
I know they can't go east, but.
They're not, they're just looking to put in a fire suppression system at this point.
Okay. So there's been no discussion about anything else as far as any expansion of the building or?
Uh, they just did, they, they completed, uh, I believe they completed an expansion. Not to, you know, they put on the south parking lot and then they completed some work inside, but nothing more is planned uh, in the near future, I believe. They don't really have anywhere else to go.
With this guy, so, okay. Uh, that's all I was kinda curious on. Thank you.
Alderman Santi?
Just to confirm, doesn't Homewood Sparrow have a couple of locations within the city right now, retail? At least one, or is there any others?
Yeah, they do. Um, they have a retail and, uh, I believe they have a couple other, uh, uh, residential.
Residential.
Locations as well.
Just, thank you.
Yeah, I believe they have an office, uh, powered by Shamrock there somewhere.
Correct.
And, uh, the facility, the nest, the Sparrow's Nest is theirs. It's like one of seven or eight in, uh, the Chicagoland area, because I know they've got seven or eight other entities out there. They've grown quite a bit considerably, uh, in the last twenty-five years, uh, when they used to be just that small little area. And, uh, they've become, uh, how would you put it, uh, quite successful at, uh, their fundraising as well as, uh, their organization as well, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Before we move on to the action items, I'd just like to introduce you to Steve Rankins, which you just approved for him to be on the Economic Development Commission. Um, he's right there. If you could just, there you go. Um, he's from First Midwest Bank, a good asset to that, uh, that commission, so it'd be good to have him on board, so. Steve, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Can't back out now, you're on, so. But you can, but don't. Um, so thank you very much. Uh, moving on to 6A is a motion to approve or deny a video gaming application by the McHenry American Legion, uh, Post 491 at 1331 North Riverside Drive. Derek, you wanna go ahead and present this item?
Yeah, that's mine. I'm sorry, I'm not to that point here in the agenda. Uh, the, uh, the American Legion, obviously they're in Riverside Drive. They've been there for a number of years. Um, and, uh, they have approached the city with, they have a, uh, a Class A liquor license, which is a bar liquor license, and approached us, uh, requesting a, uh, video gaming license. As, as council, as, uh, may remember, last year, we added a video gaming license for, uh, facilities that wanted to have, um, that wanted to have video gaming. Went through a process whereby, uh, the council can now approve the liquor license and video gaming separately, uh, to be able to provide council with, with that option, with the alternative of saying, yes, we'd like to approve the liquor license, but not necessarily the video gaming. And, uh, we went through last year, I visited all thirty-eight, uh, existing liquor license facilities with video gaming. I met with all those individuals. We executed, uh, agreements with all of them regarding partitioning and specific to the type of liquor license that they have, uh, currently have. And, uh, and the American Legion is coming before us requesting, uh, consideration of a video gaming license for their facility. And they're looking at, uh, two, I believe between two and three games. I think they're leaning towards two games just based on size of the, of the facility. And because it's a club, uh, you know, obviously, uh, that's, it's a club, it's over twenty-one. Um, uh, they're gonna have video gaming monitors there, they're gonna have some partitioning there. Um, but, uh, but they, they're before council for consideration for video gaming tonight. And that would take effect, uh, by the way, May first. It would be subject to them executing the development agreement that all other, uh, video gaming, uh, holders have had to execute with the city. And it would go into effect on May first. Their, that, that part of the licensing, their video gaming, they could get as soon as council approved it tonight. The development agreement, May first.
Thank you, Derek. Any questions by council on this item? Alderman Santi?
Uh, just to, the actual gaming license will be, uh, the applicant's name is this Mr. Orton, or how does that work?
Uh, rep. So, go, so.
How does that work?
Yeah, so.
It's Orton.
So he's the, he's the agent on behalf of the, uh, on behalf of the American Legion.
Okay.
And I don't know what his official title is there, but we.
Called him Socrates.
President. We, we ask for, we ask for, in cases where it's, uh, a private business, you know, for the onsite manager or the manager that lives within a certain distance, uh, Mr. Orton is the, is the agent and is, uh, or the president of this organization that's, that's, uh, whose name obviously is on the application.
Okay, and everything that we do for applications, we have to just go through and check of that person or the actual board? How does it?
Yeah, well, that's, that would be part of the, uh, that would be part of the liquor, when the.
Okay.
Liquor licensing comes up, uh, those individuals that are listed go through the background checks and all that, just like, uh, anybody that applies for liquor license goes through that process.
All right. Thank you. No further questions for me.
Any other questions by council? See none? Uh, is there any, uh, comments by the public regarding this item? See none. I'm looking for a motion to approve 6A as presented. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Hardy? Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
No.
I just wanted to make a statement.
Sure.
That's the fact that, uh, uh, and I don't know how this is gonna go, yes, a or nay, but, uh, as far as video gaming, I have no problem with an entity that's been around, uh, in McHenry for a long time, uh, and provides services to a lot of our residents. I think, uh, the intent of the council in the past has always been video gaming as far as the fact that we have more and more entities that wanna come in and if we wanna have the video gaming, by no means. If this passes tonight, I don't think, uh, at least I don't feel that I would, uh, necessarily wanna see a ton of other applications coming in again. This is to help out one of our own, uh, entities here at the city that I feel, uh, is deserving of the, uh, the license.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next item on the agenda is 6B, ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a development incentive agreement between the city of McHenry and RR McHenry LLC. Doug, please present it.
Thank you, Mayor Jett. In October of 2016, the council approved a development and, uh, incentive agreement with Blue Stone Single-Tentney Properties LLC to offset extraordinary development expenses for the development of a fueling and retail center, including the extension of the city's water main approximately one half mile for a property at the northwest corner of Chapel Hill and Route 120. The agreement expired. A new agreement was presented to council in March and April of 2019, and that expired at the end of 2019. Um, the agreement before you today includes the following, uh, or the development, um, with, with Thornton's being the fueling station brand. Uh, formerly, there were seven pumps, whereas now there are ten pumps. Uh, the eighty-four hundred square foot convenience store has decreased in size to fifty-five hundred square feet due to the increase in the number of pumps. The eighteen hundred, uh, square foot, uh, of retail immediately west of the Ricky Rockets Convenience Store has been eliminate, eliminated, the sidecar retail. A bypassed lane has been added to diesel fueling area. The car wash has been eliminated. The fueling station has been shifted to the east. Um, and, uh, been working with Attorney McCarl, has put in a lot of work on the, this development incentive agreement. And, um, looking for, uh, uh, council consideration this evening. And Drew, uh, from Thornton's is here to answer any questions you may have in consideration of this agreement.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions, comments by council? Alderman Glad?
Yeah. In the agreement, we're talking about, uh, access, uh, that they will allow, uh, customers of, uh, the Chocolate Factory to, uh, to use their facility to park?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a intergovernmental agreement of some kind, uh, between the two? Make sure that.
Yes, Drew's is off to again with Thornton's. There's a CCNR agreement that's of record between the two parties that defines the shared parking area and also the ability for, uh, guests, patrons of the Chocolate Factory to park on our lease premises and then walk to the building. So that is in place. It is of record today.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had also is, is, uh, because this agreement only goes, what, for a certain amount of years? Correct?
Correct, yes.
And, uh, we're talking a gateway sign as far as them, uh, allowing us, uh, access, uh, to maintain it and everything if it goes on their property. But there's nothing in here that says anything past the agreement date. We need to have some kind of language that specifically states, uh.
Yeah, I think we put in some easement language in there, didn't we, Drew, in the gateway? We did, David, yeah. It's in paragraph eight, I believe, somewhere buried in there. Just to clarify one thing, um, I think the agreement talks about optionality with the sign. So currently, the sign's located in the state right-of-way. And the approved plans allow the city and us to relocate that sign within the right-of-way. In case that doesn't happen, we would enter into a separate easement agreement with the city, you know, the terms of which we could agree, you know, with David on, and discuss the term of that easement within that document, that separate document.
Again, just so that it doesn't get dropped, uh, however many years down the road, if this, uh, agreement expires, that, uh, we still have the rights as far as, uh, to maintain that sign if it's on their property and, and able to keep it there.
Yeah, so what it says right in the middle of this.
Number.
And, and granted, it's a complicated paragraph, but it says, notwithstanding the foregoing, right in the middle of it.
Thirty-six. Page thirty-six.
Hard page six of the agreement.
Thirty-six in computer. What page is it?
Thirty-six, hard computer. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Well, right in the middle of it, it starts with notwithstanding like any other legal paragraph does. Notwithstanding the foregoing, you see that? It's about.
Notwithstanding the foregoing, okay.
Okay, and then et cetera. Should it be necessary to construct the gateway sign upon the subject premises instead of locating it with an IDOT, developer or its tenant shall select the location of the gateway sign upon the subject property and shall grant to the city a right to enter the property for purposes of maintaining it pursuant to an easement executed by the parties according to the deeds. So it anticipates that problem, whether it comes to be or not, we don't know, but it tried to take care of that provision there. And then it goes on with some of the provisions about the easement insurance.
And I just look at it, and I, and I read that earlier, but again, uh, does that language go away when this expires and?
It does. It does.
Okay, so, I guess my only concern is the fact that, uh, after this expires, uh, it will be able to be enforced afterwards, correct?
No, it expires. It expires.
As far as our rights to go after and maintain?
Well, no, the provision expires.
The provision expires, but I mean as far as the easement itself and all that.
Oh, no, if there's an easement recorded, that'll, that'll be perpetual.
Okay, that's, that was.
So long as we do something within twenty years, we're good.
Okay.
And after that, I'm retired, so.
We were totally covered after, after the fact.
Did you give us total?
Record.
Any other questions? Alderman Schaefer?
Um, the concern I have, um, that, um, exitway by the Chocolate Factory, I guess this would be for Ross, Doug, or Doug, I'm not sure. You know, the little, that's on the west side of the Chocolate Factory that comes out on the 120?
Yes.
Is that still gonna be existing with this? Is that?
Those will not change. Yeah, it's a right in, right out on the west, to the west of, uh, Chocolate Factory?
Yeah, the west side of the Chocolate Factory.
Yeah, it's a right in, right out.
So will they be able to? So the, the convenience store and all the guests there and all that traffic will be able to exit in that? Cause that's a very tight fit.
You're talking right in front, like, right to the left. So he's talking about the cut-in right now.
On the Chocolate Factory.
That's gonna go away.
That's gonna go away.
That's, yeah, that whole, that whole corner's gonna get redone.
Right.
That's going.
So that's not gonna be a cut-in anymore.
They gave up that access.
Okay, that was my question, sorry.
Sorry, I misunderstood, yeah. But they gave that all up. It's gonna be curb all the way around.
Correct.
Okay.
You mentioned that, you know, there's an entrance to the north on Chapel Hill.
I just saw the dotted line in there and I didn't know if that was.
That's just existing.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had, cause that, that was my concern.
Yeah.
So will there be no parking then next to the building whatsoever to the Chocolate Factory building?
So you'll see the parking spots to the west? Uh, there's actually a revised plan. There's more parking to the west. Um, and then also right behind the Chocolate Factory and then straight across that parking lot, there's four spots.
Yeah, I see.
And there's gonna be handicaps.
Okay.
But you will not be able to park next to or in front, right?
Correct, yeah. To answer your question, that, that there will be no access up against the building except in the very rear where we see the handicap spots.
Got it, thank you.
Alderman Santi?
Yeah, real quickly, any idea what you're estimating annually in, in sales tax on this development?
Sure, uh, just to speak for the Thornton's portion of the development, somewhere between, I think, considerably a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so upon this agreement, we'll be looking at the fifty-fifty split. And until we hit that number, it'll continue to be fifty-fifty. And once it gets to that, once it gets to the number, then it goes to its standard.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Yep.
All right, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Glad? Yeah, I just wanna be assured that this project is gonna go forward and that it's gonna get completed. This is the third time we're looking at agreements, uh, we had Thornton's, then we had Ricky Rockets, and now we got Thornton's again. I mean, cause, uh, the site was approved for Thornton's back twenty years ago. And it just never happened. And, uh, I just wanna be sure that, uh, assured that, uh, this project will go forward this time, uh, cause we want you in our community, so, you know, we're welcoming you in our community and I would hope that, uh, Thornton's takes it as the fact that being accepted in this community, they will move forward quickly.
Indeed, yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, appreciate you. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. I'm looking for a motion to approve 6B as presented. Alderman Santi?
I will make that motion of 6B as it's presented.
Second, Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. See you soon.
See ya.
Next item on the agenda is 6C, uh, motion to pass an ordinance annexing property at 1208 Charles Street and an ordinance granting a zoning map amendment to RM dash one, low-density multifamily residential from E Estate for the property located at 1208 Charles Street. Ross, wanna present this item?
I would certainly mind the.
Oh, Doug. Yep, sorry, go ahead. Let Ross do it. I mean, let's see. Doug, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the owners of the property located at 1208 Charles Street are requesting annexation to the city of McHenry and a zoning map amendment to RM one from E Estate upon annexation. This was previously before the council. Um, there was an error in the petition for annexation. That's why the annexation's being redone. So, um, the petition is corrected and, um, that's why the annexation's being proposed again. And then the zoning is being corrected to RM one with the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, from E Estate upon annexation to the city of McHenry.
Any other? Thanks, Doug. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, do we have, uh, any concerns about, uh, the setbacks on this property? Don't. They need some kind of variance or something. As far as on the south side of the property?
Typically, when, when I annex property, I, I take the properties in as they are. And if they improve the property or do something to the property, once they're in the city and they need a, if they can't comply with the ordinance, then they, they do have to get a variance at that time.
Yeah, I just take a look at this and, uh, I've been told that the, uh, the pictures don't accurately, uh, tell exactly where the property lines are. But to me, it almost looks as if, uh, is that a back garage back there? Uh, behind the building? That almost kinda, it's a little further south of that line.
There is a survey, uh.
If you're looking at the county GIS.
Yes.
Those property lines.
Yeah.
Have to shift to the south. They are a little bit off.
Yeah, they, if you look at the survey, they're not on the property line. They're a little bit off the property line. The GIS is a little bit off.
Okay, but I, how far off is that GIS? It can't be that far off.
It's, it's two or three feet.
Okay, two or three feet. Cause by no means would it be anywhere near, uh, within, uh, our ordinances as it sets. Uh, plus, uh, I know across, uh, Lake Street again, uh, you know, we're looking at quite a few feet there. We're, uh, we have a driveway and part of the right-of-way and, uh, and of course, we have all these trucks that are parked out there and all that. And I would hope that, uh, that would all be cleaned up. Considering the petitioner also owns that property across the street. And even though he's not annexing that, uh, we do annex across the road. And, uh, yeah, you know, if we're gonna move forwards with this, uh, I feel that, uh, you know, we need to make sure that, uh, we're right, right to begin, go start and enforce the ordinances as they're written. Another question I had was, uh, what is our congressional plan show for this area? I always thought of a single family.
It might be in the application that was filmed out. I gotta go finish that question or not.
Well, it's in the application and what was actually put in there can be different. The first application said that there were no electors in there and there were. And it's been corrected since, uh, the second request. So, I think we just need to know what, you know, this council, uh, are we opening up a fandoorers box? Is that what we went over there as multifamily, uh? You know, once we give out zoning for multifamily, it's, like, we can change it, take it away. So it will start a development trend in that area. So it will start a development trend in that area as far as any other annexations if we do.
It's actually a medium-density residential.
I'm sorry?
Medium-density residential is the complaint.
Medium-density, so that would be considered medium-density?
Yeah, it, it doesn't specify either single or multifamily, it's just medium-density.
Okay, so it basically fits in with our comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. So that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Schaefer?
The, the one concern I had that I don't think we touched on the last time either is that this, um, the, the burning ordinance is, is applying to this now that they're annexed to the city too, and after our last vote, they were still burning construction waste or whatever out there, and it's, it's much greater than a, a residential fire pit. It's not that, so I would be concerned about that moving forward as well.
Alderman Schaefer, are you talking that property or the property north of, like?
No, this property.
That one.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none, I'm looking for a motion to approve six C as presented. Alderman Santi?
I will make that motion.
Second, Alderman Harding? Discussion? Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
No.
I think the mayor, remember, right?
I'm the first one, yeah.
Yes. All right, pass. All right, that has passed, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is discussion items, seven A is a mining and conceptual development plan for...
Oh, is there another vote, I'm sorry?
Yeah, for zoning amendment.
Did we start to read those under two?
Yeah, cause the mayor votes on one and not the other.
Oh, okay.
So this is the, so, yeah.
So, I mean, you could've done them both at once even though you voted, but whatever.
Okay.
So now it's a motion to...
Yeah, so a motion to approve an ordinance granting a zoning ma- amendment to RM dash one, low-density multifamily residential from E Estate for the property located at twelve oh eight Charles Street. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Harding? Discussion? Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Uh, next item on the agenda is seven A is a mining and conceptual development plan for McHenry Lakes. The supplement is provided, um, and we also have the applicant here, Jack Pease. Doug, do you wanna go ahead and present this?
Sure, thank you, mayor. Jack Pease of Super Aggregates is seeking to purchase a one hundred and ten acre parcel of property located at the northeast corner of Chapel Hill Road and Illinois Route one twenty and annex it to the city of McHenry. Additionally, he would like to subdivide it into four lots, develop commercial along Route one twenty and mine approximately a hundred and three acres, after which a new single-family development would be built. Uh, the purpose of this discussion item is to provide council with the opportunity to discuss the concept prior to any additional steps being taken. The site would be zone C five and RS one slash AM agricultural mining overlay upon annexation to the city. The future land use map depicts the area as low-density residential and commercial along Route one twenty, and the property is currently outside of the city's FPA and I'll turn it over.
Jack, would you like to go ahead and start us off?
Good evening, uh, my name's Jack Pease, uh, I reside here at McHenry at two, two hundred South Green Street. And, uh, before I started introducing us and the project, I'd like to congratulate and thank the city council, the mayor, the staff. The downtown McHenry has completely changed over the last few years. Uh, we're enjoying it, my grandkids, my mother is, and I actually have friends from Libertyville and Barrington. They used to say, meet us over at Bob Chinsor, meet us there. Three people last summer called me up and said, we'll come to McHenry, one, one walk on Green Street. We'll go to the van on Thursday night. So you guys are doing a fantastic job and, uh, you need to get, to be appreciated for us, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, my name is Jack Pease, uh, we moved our business to McHenry twenty-two years ago, and we started building some commercial building, uh, just west of the hospital and that commercial park. Uh, the building where Kim and Patty's restaurant is, uh, is one of our buildings, a building across the street. Those two buildings have about fifty-five businesses in them, multi-tenants, uh, uh, different, wide variety of businesses. Then we built the building next to the Trio gas station on the corner of Bow Valley and Crystal Lake Road, where our main office is, along with about sixty-five other businesses. So for twenty years, we, we've been a part of the, uh, the city trying to grow our business there as well as bring other businesses there. Uh, just this past year, I moved to, to the city, and, uh, our businesses are, Peace Construction, which has been a road building civil contractor for forty-five, fifty years, Super Aggregates that for about forty years has been in the aggregate business, Super Mix that has been in the ready-mix business for about thirty years, and Fox Development that does, uh, commercial and residential development, uh, around McHenry County and a little further out. My staff I have with me tonight is Phil Brown, who heads up our real estate and permitting, operations manager by son Tori Pease, Chris Alby, our sales manager. And if I can take about twenty minutes of your time and introduce the project to you as your next-door neighbor, not in the city, but I have a strong preference that I would like to annex to the city, but I'm, I'm here to kind of test the temperature, do you see, to see if that's something you'd want me to continue to pursue and, uh, see if we could be a, a good neighbor in the city. And, uh, I'm assuming everybody has a booklet that we had passed out, and if anyone needs one, we have some more with us.
Everyone's got one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Okay, and in that book, uh, we showed the location of the property, which is basically the farm fields from Chapel Hill Road east, uh, all the way north to the drive-in theater, all the way east to the Thalen sand and gravel operation, kind of surrounding the, uh, Shell gas station and the two homes on the corner. Uh, there's an old set of farm buildings there that we have received our asbestos report, and we're ready to demolish those now, and, uh, in the next month or two, those buildings will be leaving. Forever, they're all, you know, not worth fixing. Your, your zoning map and your comprehensive map are, are absolutely in tune with what our proposal is. Uh, it shows highway commercial along one twenty, and it shows the rest of it as, uh, low-density residential. And that's, uh, actually what, exactly what we'd like to propose doing. Then I, I know I have a hurdle to get across, and that is, uh, you've had about sixty years of a gravel operation that you can't wait till it's gone, and on the eve of that, I've gotta walk in the door and say, why, we're a, a good thing and a good neighbor. And, uh, so I tried to point out in the book the differences, uh, it's, it's a hundred and ten acre, it's like twelve hundred acres, so less than one-tenth the size. Our operation, uh, is only about fifty truckloads per day, uh, which is about five per hour, which by the traffic count on one twenty is less than one percent of the current traffic, so an insignificant amount of traffic, most importantly, heading east, not heading west. We already have an operation just west of Crystal Lake at Lily Pond and fourteen, and another one in Richmond, just west of the Village of Richmond, so our needs are always from McHenry to the east. We have a hard time right now competing in Maylie Lake County. There's one other operation, which would be Thalens, that, uh, has a garbage advantage, so we, we're at a disadvantage heading east, and, and this would put us at a heat stand with them for sales. Along with the demand for aggregates, uh, is about the same from year to year and even from decade to decade. And what's happened over the last few decades, I'm gonna skip, if we're going through the book, I'm gonna skip to a, a map that's in that book, that, uh, when, when you have time, look at that map, because this map goes back to our gravel facility resource map that, uh, if everybody can remember, Sue Eat Hard from the county. She was set by the county board around thirty years ago with the task of doing a inventory of all the gravel pits. Then the county board met many times and talked about, how did we ever become the county of twenty-four gravel pits? And they felt it was a, uh, a, a large number, and, uh, and actually went quite a few years without issuing any new permits. And what's happened, though, in that thirty-some years, of those twenty-four, sixteen of them have closed already, and I kind of did the inventory, uh, on the map. Those red dots are gone forever, I, I put the locations and the names of who operated them. And of the other eight, every single one of the other eight are going to be closed by, uh, in the next six years. Some of them just in a year or three years, so we're, so we're going from twenty-four down to almost none of those originals. And since then, in over thirty years, only seven new operations have opened. So we're trying to, out of those facilities, fill the public demand, uh, with about one-third, about to be one-quarter of the facilities, and, uh, it's a strain, we have a hard time fulfilling it. And, uh, this past year, there were numerous products that ran out at either Thalens or even ourselves, and we all worked very hard to meet it because probably seventy percent of the demand is from, uh, public entities. I dot jobs or Airfield, uh, the new Fort Four ninety-four expressway that's gonna be built and needs two hundred and fifty thousand ton of MSE sand, the rebuilding of Lake Cook along Wheeling is gonna take about three hundred thousand ton over the next two years. So we, we, we have the same demand without the resources that we had before, and those resources are dwindling, so, and, and we need to occasionally approve a new source, and the, the best way for me to suggest a good way to do it is a small location that only runs for a few years rather than decades and decades, and, uh, has an operator that has a very good proof of record. And, and we gladly give you a sheet of all the other towns that we've been in over the last forty-some years, from the, uh, village administrator to the police chief, to, to people that have been there for decades that can testify what type of neighbor we, we have been. And, and we, we're gonna, I don't have that with me tonight, but, uh, I'm gonna suggest that Phil shares that with you because we've got many long-term relationships with, uh, only good investing occurring, whether it's Richmond, Spring Grove, uh, McHenry County, Crystal Lake, uh, the other towns that we've been in, we've had a flawless relationship. So the demand is there, uh, we've got lots of pictures here, we'd love to take people on tours to show what a good, responsible operator we are, uh, because we don't just mine gravel. We always have the end development mine right from the, from the, the first day. And our goal never is to take all we can out of a square hole and just leave a square perimeter, which looks like a scar on the earth, but we, we take much less, and we leave material in high spots and high areas around the perimeter so that we can have development around what's typically a nice, beautiful, clear lake in the middle. When we get, when you get to the, the brochure and look in the back, you'll see lots of photographs of completed gravel pits that we've had. Nish Road just south of here, about five miles, uh, you'll see a couple houses on a lake there. That's actually where my two sons live, uh, on each side of a gravel pit lake there. Just south of Bridge, there's Lightyear Lake Estates, which has two lakes in it that we mined, and now there's a residential subdivision there. And then we, I even showed pictures in there, uh, like Waterford or Sugar Creek, gravel operation of our, of ours that are quarter done or three-quarters done. And as they're three-quarters done, more than half is already restored. The lake, the shoreline's in, the beaches are, uh, have sand beaches, uh, the roads are started in. Uh, there's pine trees and berms that have been along the roads ever since we started. So, uh, we never have a whole mined area. We only have a little bit of a mined area because we've already restored what we've done two years earlier as we progress our way around. And when you look at our concept plan, it, it definitely shows that pattern of, uh, multiple phases where we don't get beyond phase two before we're already starting to restore phase one. And most of the restoration is very minimal because of the hundred and ten acres, uh, about fifty acres is lake. So we're leaving behind a, a blue body of clear water, uh, we just restored areas around the perimeter, except for right down the center, we're leaving a area for the residential, uh, street to go in. They have some estate homes on, on the lake. And, uh, I put a page in there of all projects that we've completed in McHenry, or Peace Construction has completed. And, and as you drive through McHenry, if you didn't notice over the past several decades, whether it was Bus Ford's parking lot or, or the Loop Road around the hospital, or the new Walgreens in town, and I could go from one town to the other, we either did the site work, supplied the concrete and the aggregates, did the paving, we, we either did most, half or most of every one, every one of the projects through town, so we've, you know, we, these materials do end up also, uh, improving the city of McHenry. So to that, the, the book speaks for itself, so I, unless you have any questions, anything specific, I'd like to save and get into details at the real hearings, and, and I'm here tonight to ask if, you know, we're trying to make a choice. We're, we're adjacent contiguous to both, uh, McHenry and Lake More. We have a strong preference to work with the city of McHenry. We've got a perfect relationship for decades with the county, but I think whenever we're contiguous to a city, we really have an obligation to try to first work with the city and, uh, so I'm here to kind of ask, it's our preference to bring all the information and answer all the questions and take everyone on a tour, and, uh, have the city council consider our formal application later, but I'd like to ask tonight if you'd, if that's a direction that you'd like me to head, or if you don't want anything to do with, uh, the operation. Keeping in mind, we would be immediately the first year demolishing the farm buildings, improving the four commercial lots, marketing them, uh, even putting up a spec building to sell our rent. So the commercial and everything you'd see along one twenty, uh, would be done almost immediately. Then going around the perimeter, we would start heading along the west, heading north, and it would take at least the first ten years to finish up along Chapel Hill Road, where we would first, before we did anything, uh, build a landscape berm that's mowed weekly, has trees on it with bark circles. And if you're familiar with any of our berms that we maintain, uh, a typical one would be a subdivision we have called Dutch Creek Estates in Johnsburg. We've got a half mile of berm along Spring Grove Road, and about a quarter mile of berm along Johnsburg Road. And that's the type and quality berm that we have, because you wouldn't be able to see any of the operation inside. And, uh, about every five years, we would complete, you know, basically... And about every five years, we would complete, you know, basically forward the property, moving our way around. And then finally finish up over at the east side where we are connected to the Thalen operation and the lake they're creating. So I guess, is there any questions I could ask first or?
Well, first off, I just wanna thank you for meeting with me, what, six months ago or so when you started working on this project. Honestly, I was very supportive of it. And I think what we need from the council is just a consensus of the council that they can move forward with the next step and file an application here and go through the public hearing process. But any questions for Jack or concerns by any of the council members? One more, Sandy.
Jack, thank you. Thank you very much for meeting with us tonight and bringing us this proposal. You definitely made some statements at the start regards to, yes, you've been around here for many, many years, done work in and out of the community of McHenry. And I for one would like to look at this as a positive and move forward and, you know, keep in discussions with staff. And as we move to levels, to come back to us at some point with some discussions and some negotiations, basically to see exactly where we're at. And, you know, hopefully we can become good partners on a project like this.
I strongly encourage everybody to, my phone number's on the front cover, that's my cell phone number. I love to meet people and take forty-five minutes of their time and go by two completed operations that we had, one south of Richmond, one just four miles south of McHenry. And then even within fifteen minutes, if you're gonna see an ongoing operation, because it's not just ongoing, two-thirds is already done and completed and landscaped and being mowed. And you would see just a stark difference from what you're used to seeing west on route one-twenty to what we do. And I think once you see that difference, you see the big point. Somehow the public's getting the aggregates they need for concrete and new paved roads and new schools, but by somebody that's being responsible and being a good neighbor at the same time. And I'm just asking for that opportunity to have an open mind and have people visit our facilities. And most important, the facilities will speak for themselves, but a forty-year record of village administrators, police chiefs, township trustees, you know, we'll give a nice, long list of people that have been working with us already for twenty or thirty or forty years even, that'll really speak for itself and try to get you to that comfort level. So I don't know if we need a consensus or?
Well, we'll go through and see if anyone had questions and then we'll go. Alden Schaefer?
Yeah, I'm fine with this. The concept plan is, it looks very good to me. What was the term, full term, you think till this would be?
A maximum of twenty years with no buying of property next door, no asking for a time extension, a real commitment upfront. Because we wanna get to, we don't just make our living selling each ton of material. We make half our living selling the houses and the lots at the end as well. And other producers never, don't know how to think that way. And when you go see, when we go on a tour, we're gonna take you to subdivisions we built around lakes that were gravel pits for fifteen years. And we were anxious to hurry up and get them done so we could turn them into the nice houses on nice streets. So, you know, I wanna get you to grasp that big picture that we wanna build the nicest residential community in McHenry. And you'll see other ones we built that are like this. Right in the book, you see Tori's house and, you know, people come to our house or our beach house we have there and they ask, why would you ever leave and go to work today? You live in like a paradise. You know, it's hard to say, well, this was our gravel pit for fifteen years.
You'll open it up to more than just family, right?
Pardon?
You'll open it up to more than just family, right?
Tori might have a bigger house on there.
That was joking, by the way. The other question, in a property this size, has it been, do you have something similar that's actually been completed in twenty years?
Yes, exactly the same size, within one acre, was our Glacier Lake Estates on Keystone Road, just about two miles west of the Richmond High School.
Okay.
And we were there, fifteen years, started and done. And it's a nice residential development with a couple lakes there that we could go see now. And there's photographs in the book, but it's, they're so close, we might as well just get, you know, whenever anyone has the time, get in the car and go look at two completed ones, two ongoing ones that are all no more than ten or twelve minutes from right here.
I appreciate it. I'm comfortable with moving forward with the concept.
All right, any others? Alden, go ahead.
Yeah. Jack, are you familiar with the Meyer pit or the Lafarge pit now as far as our last negotiations and?
Chuck Miller was my mentor. When I was twenty-two years old, he saw me for the third time, parked on his shoulder with my red pickup truck. He says, what are you looking at? I said, I'm trying to learn how to build a road. And ever since then, he says, just stop over, I'll help you anytime. So we own this truck now.
Right, but I'm talking about as far as our last agreement with them. You're quite aware of that.
Yes, I'm very familiar with the whole thing. I've read their agreements, their extensions, and they've truly been in a penalty phase for decades now and warned their welcome out. And they don't know how to act like a developer that's trying to make something nice there. They just know how to act like a corporation that wants to get every last bit of aggregate out and really don't even have a plan for what they've left behind that's thought out at all. It's not a positive asset at all.
So, you know, needless to say, I would be looking at what we did with them as far as looking at an agreement with you. And I'm not saying we mirror it because needless to say, every location's different and every situation is different. But that's the way I look at it is as far as the fact that we did a lot of work. Actually, we have a gentleman in the audience there that Mr. Curry took and when he was at Alderman, did quite a bit of work, you know, on the gravel pits issue. Needless to say, I'll probably be calling him as negotiations get talked about at council just to get his input because he did wonders over there. But I just, you know, needless to say, would like to see you move forward into the city of McHenry. I would definitely welcome you wholeheartedly. I've known your reputation for many, many years. I used to work for Menards years ago as a contractor up and I know a lot of people that worked for you. So I commend you on a very, what I consider a very successful business plan that you have for your life and just the reputation that you have out there as far as working with people.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Anyone yea or nay? Alden, aye?
Yea.
Aye.
Going forward.
Alden, a headache?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should move forward based on what's been presented so far.
Okay. Alden, a headache?
Yeah, I like the fact too, I've seen some of the subdivisions he's put in and I like to move forward and keep somewhere in the city.
All right. And Jack, I appreciate you coming out and all of you for coming out here. I think we have a consensus of coming back with the next process, meeting with Doug and getting that planning and zoning set up. But I appreciate you thinking of coming to the city of McHenry.
Thank you. And it may seem premature, but it's not. Before even the next hearing, if, and I think we'd rather put everybody in a bus together and drive around at the convenience of every single person, just call and I gladly do a private, you know, presentation because you need to see existing operations and past completed operations to really get a grasp of who we are. You need to have a list of people that we've been dealing with for decades. And I wanna hand that all on to each person so that when you start having a hearing, the Aldermen are well informed and, you know, have an open mind at least.
Derek and I took that tour with him. He drives okay, so I'll take that ride with him. But yeah, so no, it's a great, great-looking facility, especially the one where Tori and the beach house is absolutely amazing. I would never leave that place. But thank you very much. And Alden Schaefer?
You haven't proposed this to Lake Moore or the village there, correct?
No, I didn't wanna get started in an auction-type situation. He called me up and I just said if I had any interest, I'd stop by and I have not even stopped to talk to them. The county is always open-minded. We've had six operations like this in the county over the last forty-five years and always had a perfect relationship. So they kind of remain open-minded and we still haven't talked to them because even if we did, you're the adjacent city within the mile and a half and they would strongly encourage us to be working together even if we weren't gonna next. So we might as well just try it with X and work together and leave the county out of us, is my opinion.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jack, appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm gonna go ahead and open it for public comment. Alden Curry?
I don't know Alderman's name.
Nobody caught that, but me.
Oh, I caught it right away. Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments on the whole idea of another gravel pit. And I've got some, I've got some questions and I'm sure that just a little bit, I've talked to a few council members, there are some questions that are out there. And I know it's really early in this process, you know, you can't have all the answers right away. I mean, that's very true. We came through, I will call it a bad experience, you know, with our current gravel pit. We got through it. It took about a year of my life, but we did get through it and I think we got to a result that at least is somewhat acceptable. And I would be hopeful that any other company coming in to wanna do this would treat it differently than it sounds like, at least by what the gentleman is talking about, that would be the case. But I did want, just going through, before the meeting, going through the packet and looking at the information, I had some questions and some concerns, I guess, with the way it's being presented, at least at this point. And I know that we're early in the process, but it, the whole thing sort of seems to gloss over a little bit, forgive the term, but that there might not be residential nearby when in fact it's hard up against a residential subdivision just to its east. It's not in the city of McHenry, but it is still a residential subdivision. And it's directly across Chapel Hill Road from a residential subdivision to the west. And just as a kind of a fact, all of those are half the distance of what we're dealing with with Meyer or Lafarge County. In other words, this operation won't be, call it twice as close, but half the distance away as to what is happening now with Meyer. So when we talk about dust and noise, realize we're gonna be a lot closer overall. From day one, we will start on that property. If you look at the distances, you can't get more than about two thousand feet away from a residential property. So currently, just if you wanna compare that, what we went through with Lafarge pit, the operations in Lafarge right now, the truck loading facility, for example, where they load trucks, is four thousand feet away from Burnham Tree, which is one of our biggest complaining subdivisions, four thousand feet. Here, we're talking from day one about two thousand feet. So I think there's some concerns about how close it is. And it seems to indicate that the properties that makes a claim will experience no noise or dust impacts. I think based on our experience, we know that's not gonna be the case. I don't see how it could be. But we've just come through bad experiences there. And I'd be interested as you go forward to see how that's going to get handled. It also talks about conveyor usage as a plus, yet that is one of the biggest complaints, noise complaints in the Burnham Tree subdivision today, is the conveyors and the crusher. But the conveyor itself is a noise source. Now, maybe we can look at different conveyors and have something that's better than what we're dealing with today. But everything there, crushers, conveyors, truck loading, whatever you've got, and this new will be closer than what we have today at the Lafarge facility. And that's just a fact. You can get your measurement out, measure it on Google Maps, or however you wanna do it. It's just a fact of life. It also talks, the proposal talks about how there'll be fifteen feet below grade, it's a shallower deposit, and that there'll be ten-foot berms. The Lafarge pit is sixty-five feet below grade and the ten-foot berms weren't good enough. All the new berms were requiring them to, we required them to raise, were up to fourteen feet. I realize it's only another four feet, but if you take an angle and weigh sound trowels, four feet can make a big difference. So, but we're already sixty-five feet down, so a total of seventy-nine feet versus twenty-five feet. I don't think we can make the claim that there's not going to be a noise issue. Short term, yes, short term compared to Meyer, I don't think Meyer was ever intended to be sixty-two years. It's just the way it turned out because they kept coming back. If you look at the history of it, you know, for annexation, 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 and it kept getting approved. So I don't think there was ever really any intention of it being as long as what it turned out, so I don't know that's a fair comparison. And besides, twenty years is still a generation, so it's not exactly short term. And then I was confused with some of the language, it may be just my confusion. It talks about, on one page, about an initial twenty-year term, and I think maybe that's just to do with the revenues showing to the city versus an implication that an initial twenty-year term and the possibility of further terms. And I know what Mr. Pease just said, that it will not come back. However, there's nothing that precludes that, that I know legally, unless we, something can be crafted, but future council can certainly extend it in the future. I don't think you can do anything on council today that would preclude a future council from extending it. I don't know, it wouldn't be a decision they would have to make at the time. But I don't think that we should kid ourselves that we say, well, I'll go in twenty years and it could never be anything more than it can be. Mr. Pease could end up selling the property. It happens in this world. And some other operator could then be asking for extended terms. So I just, I just wanna bring those points up. I'm not saying that that's, you know, I'm not even saying that necessarily don't go forward. I'm just pointing out some things that I think we learned going through the other process and looking back in history at what did happen. And I would hate to see us start something today that thirty years from now or twenty years from now, people sitting in these chairs are gonna be looking back the same way I was and saying, what were they doing? Why did they do this? Why did they agree to this? Because they were not good agreements in the past. It's a better agreement today, didn't get everything we want, I bet it's a better agreement. And finally, back to, well, on page thirteen, he talks, they talk about the revenues. I was a little confused and maybe it's just my confusion. I'm not aware that a municipality receives any sales tax from aggregate sales. I may be wrong about that. But I'm not aware that we receive any sales tax from aggregate sales. So the question that I would have is where are the fees? Because there are no fees shown that I can see like we have with the current gravel pit and with Lafarge. And with that, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott. Jack, you might wanna get with Scott. Maybe he'll go on a ride with you and make, I think, it a lot easier, I think, because I know there is a couple council members that do speak with Scott on a regular basis. So I think it'd be helpful, Scott, if you wouldn't mind taking a ride. All right. Any other questions, comments regarding this item? Jack? Everyone, thank you very much for coming and we'll be in touch. Before we move on to the next items, I don't know if he's gonna be leaving, but Cody Sheriff, can you please stand? This is the new city planner that we've been looking for, for about a year. He came from the county, sharp guy. It's exciting to have him on board. So Cody, welcome to the city of McHenry.
Thank you. Good experience with gravel pits. A good guy.
There you go. We're good. Thanks, Cody. All right, so the next item on the agenda, and guys, you do not have to stay here for this, I'm sure there's, but just, he's more than welcome to go. I'm actually one of the five. Next item on the agenda is discussion fiscal year 2021, fiscal year 2025, capital improvement plan draft. And Derek will go ahead and. And Derek will go ahead and present the item.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. It's that time of the year again for the capital improvement program. And I always do a brief presentation here and before there's any questions or comments by council. And again, right now, it's still in the draft form and what we'll do is make any additions. I've already found a couple of things that need to be changed in it myself, as well as some other directors. And I'm bringing back the council for adoption on February third. It's not required by the council to do that, but it helps to give us some idea moving into the budget process, even at least at a time, a chance to look at it. And we have started including this in our annual budget document now. Our annual budget document now is, is a supplement. And that's part of the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommendations for their distinguished budget awards. So just real briefly going into some background or some purpose for a capital improvement program. It's typically a five-year planning window. We've used over the last few years, ten years, for water and sewer projects. And right off the bat, I want to mention that moving into next year, we're going to be completely changing the format of this from a capital improvement program to a community investment plan. And it's going to look out twenty years for projects. And the reason we're gonna, we're looking at doing that is that, a couple of reasons really. But the main one is that the pure cost that's involved with, with public infrastructure, whether it's roads or water and sewer utilities, all the way down to vehicles and equipment. And especially after having come out of the recession and still, and as you saw in this document before you tonight, still dealing with playing catch-up on how we're gonna fund those road projects and water sewer projects and vehicle equipment replacements and really all of our capital improvements. Really puts a strain on the finances of the municipality. And really, really, we're in a reactive state right now and we have been, since I've been here, really since the recession, since, uh, a reactive state instead of a proactive state of dealing with capital improvements. I mean, let's just, let's just be honest about it. That's, that's what the capital improvement, that's what these discussions have been over years, how to play catch-up, how to patch, you know, how to do patchwork projects, how to put as much money as we can towards certain things, but that just leaves other things out. And by having a, a longer year plan, we're gonna, we'll be able to, you know, know what the life, the life cycle, the lifespan of, of vehicles and equipment, roadways, public utilities are. And we can better plan for identifying where the revenues are gonna come from, what those costs are gonna be in years that we're able to, you know, develop surpluses, I guess, or develop savings plans for how we're gonna address those infrastructure needs. And, and really municipalities now are shifting more towards community investment plans that take a look at the cost of where the, where the lifespan of equipment is today, where utilities are today, and what it's gonna cost us to replace them in the future and when we can plan on doing that. And we've had these discussions over the last five years or the last few years about a five-year plan that the window just isn't big enough. I mean, a five-year window, as long as that sounds, just isn't enough to give us a better, a good handle on, you know, really what the costs are gonna be. And as you know, because again, we've discussed it in the past, by smashing a fifty million dollar, I'll use roads for an example, a fifty million dollar road program in the five years just is not realistic. And so we really, we need to look out into a more realistic plan for how we're gonna, you know, replace a hundred and twenty-five centerline miles or roads or whatever it is, but that's pretty close, right? Troy, good, good guess or good memory of roads in, in McHenry. How we're gonna replace our vehicle fleet and equipment, how we're gonna deal with water and sewer, existing water and sewer utility projects, public facility projects. How we're gonna deal with those realistically is distinct from just putting them into a five-year plan and thinking the money's gonna fall out of the sky to be able to fund those projects. So Troy's actually taken the lead on the development of a community investment plan because, let's be honest, the vast majority of public infrastructure is public works related with roadways and water and sewer. But we're all gonna be working with him to value, provide value to those infrastructure and, and other needs, capital, capital investments needs, to be able to provide you with a much more comprehensive plan next year that, that we'll be able to start making those decisions, you know, well into the future with, you know, start, again, starting next year. But this year, here we are with the capital improvement plan. It's typically been a five-year plan. Municipalities have used five-year planning for a long time, really up until the recession and just afterwards. We review as staff the, the plan annually and update it. And we bring it to council like this for a broad discussion. Again, this is not a, I get into it in a second. It's not a budget tool. While, while we talk about dollars in this and we estimate costs for what it's gonna take to replace vehicles, equipment, capital projects, anything over ten thousand dollars, we, we talk about those debt money, but, but it's more of a project identification list and a need list, really is what it is, and not a budget. So what we do is, when we get through this project process, as we as staff move into the budget, what it really comes down to is the money, the money that we have to be able to do the projects that are in this plan. And so we can prioritize the projects. For example, local streets are always gonna be at the top of the list. Vehicles and equipment are always gonna be up at the, near the top of the list also, because those are our biggest needs. But until we get into the budget process and have a better handle on what we have for revenues, we're not able to start assigning dollars to actually spend on an annual basis. Um, again, CIPs are, are improvements in equipment of more than ten thousand dollars. We try to prioritize those things based on needs and, and again, available funding. And just as I alluded to before, it's just not realistic to think that we're going to be able to fund all the projects. It's identified in the five-year plan and thus the need to look out in the longer term to a twenty-year plan. So basically, just the process, in, in September, October, Carolyn and I put together requests for projects from council, uh, to, from directors. The directors start to put together, is really most of them have those lists going year round. Submit those projects to us in November. We then review the projects for content, the priorities, the timelines, cost estimates. We put them together in a draft plan, which council got two weeks ago to take a look at. And then obviously, it comes before council to be able to have a, an umbrella discussion about kind of what the projects are, where the priorities are at. It's really more of a brainstorming session between council and staff on kind of what projects are included in the plan more than it is a decision-making process. We have the staff here can, can answer any questions the council may have, I mean, as we go through this. But really, it's, it's an interactive process for this review tonight. And then, as I mentioned, the projects are identified as priorities as a planning document. And then we're able to take that input from council and what we know our needs are and move into the actual budget process so we can start finding dollars to be able to actually do the projects. So the capital improvement program is, program is broken down into funds. We changed this a couple of years ago, how we presented at the council, because what we tried to do is assign it by, you know, so you might have one project that has three different funding sources to it and might come out of different funds. And it got very confusing because you were, you were repeating the same project from different funding sources. And so what we've done is define it by the, the fund where the majority of the dollars would come from, from for that project. So for example, there's, there's, there's local street program projects or, or streets-related projects in here that the majority of the funding might come from general fund dollars, but it could be supplemented by motor fuel tax or surface transportation funds or, you know, other funding, county funding or, or whatever it is, other funding than general fund, but, but generally, the funding comes out of that, that primary source. So here's the funds that, that we'll go through and that the projects are broken down into. First of all, the general fund, I tried to provide throughout this presentation in the document that you have in front of you, specific page numbers. So if you want to go to those page numbers as part of the CIP document for reference, you can. So each fund will start with an overview and again, as we go through these, you know, feel free to stop me and we can have a specific conversation about it or ask any questions. Again, general fund includes public, public facilities, public safety, parks, motor pool, street sidewalks and signals, stormwater drainage, really all projects that have to do with any department in the city and the operations of the city except the recreation center, which is, which is an enterprise fund. And so the, the revenues that are generated through the recreation center will pay for the recreation facility and water sewer fund, where, where we fund capital projects, capital maintenance projects, not, not expansion or capacity projects, but capital maintenance projects out of the water sewer fund. Those, those are derived from the revenues of that fund and the base fees, which we'll get back to later. So a couple of significant changes this year to, to how the CIP is organized. The first is that in previous years, as you may recall, we've, we've had parks, vehicles and equipment as one request. We've had public works, streets, admin, vehicle requests as a separate request. We've had police vehicles and equipment as a separate request. And, and then obviously, the water sewer will, will stay a separate one for vehicles because they're funded out of that specific fund, as I mentioned. This year, we, we underwent a comprehensive overview or look, review of vehicle and equipment needs as a staff. We sat down as all the directors as a group. We charted it out. A ten-year plan for vehicle and equipment replace, replacements on our, on our marker board. We all participated in that so we could see from each other, from one department to the next, what the needs were and take a look at the age and the condition of vehicles and really lay out a, a plan for what we thought the needs were based on all those factors for, for vehicle and equipment replacement. It's not pretty. I mean, I'll say that upfront and we all know that. We talked about vehicle and equipment replacement needs in the past. But as, as we keep putting those, those replacements off, all we're doing is increasing maintenance, maintenance costs and then we're being reactive. I mean, we're, we're fixing vehicles when they break down. We're spending, you know, good money after vehicles that, that are better off probably retired as vehicles. And so again, this is a more proactive, proactive approach to it. It may cost us money upfront, but will, will get us back in the game in terms of a, a, a realistic, long-term replacement program over twenty years. So you'll see that as a single request and we'll come back around that, around to that later. And then also an adjustment to the local street program. And this is for a couple of reasons that Troy or, or Greg can speak more to, but I'll try to summarize it based on how it is in the presentation. And basically, that is to, to be able to, a couple of things. We, we have motor fuel tax dollars that we put towards a local street program already. Next year, this upcoming year, twenty twenty-one, the bond that we currently have that we're, that we're paying for roads that were done ten years ago or more, is, is finally rolling off the books. So that's between three and four hundred thousand dollars that we pay out of motor fuel tax dollars for that, for that bond issuance. So that rolls off. And so right off the bat, beginning in twenty-one, twenty-two, we'll have motor fuel tax dollars in the tune of eight to nine hundred thousand dollars that we'll be able to dedicate. We talked, Alderman, Glenn, about, and all of us, about a dedicated road program, road funding that we can identify and use moving forward. And with that five hundred thousand, we already have the three to four hundred thousand additional after next year that we can put right towards roads, plus, uh, plus some general fund, or general fund dollars to supplement that. Now we're looking at a one point seven five or two million dollar a year road program. It's not all general fund dollars, that we can throw motor fuel tax dollars like it's supposed to be towards that program, supplement it with some other funding, including general fund, but it becomes a more robust local street program that we know right off the bat every year is gonna be in that one seven five to two million dollar range. The other part of that has to do with timing of how we do, how we plan and implement our local street program. At this time, right now, council approves the funding in May and then we start spending dollars for the, the engineering and everything that's related to that road program. And it's not until, you know, summertime, mid to late summer, that we're able to get contractors on to do, to do those improvements. And by taking, I'll just call it a leap year or a lag year in how we plan, we can plan this next fiscal year. We still have a local street program, smaller one, a better plan, the robust program for twenty-one, twenty-two so that come May of twenty twenty-one, we're already ready to go. We've gone through that planning process. We can actually bring bids before council, the first meeting and in May, award those bids and go right into the construction of those roadway improvements, you know, right away in the spring instead of having to wait later in the year. So Troy, if I mess that up anyhow, I'll explain it.
No, that's, that's pretty good.
Thank you very much. No wonder sometimes. So thanks for that. So, so again, adjusting that local street program. So two significant changes outside of the fact that we're gonna completely overhaul the program and do a twenty-year community investment program starting next year. The plan we have before you is a five-year, again, still the five-year CIP for this year. Includes thirty-four project categories, a total cost of twenty-four million dollars. And you'll note right off the bat, if you've been participating in this in previous years, that that's a significant reduction in the overall five-year plan. Well, that, that goes back to what I mentioned earlier, that we, we made it more realistic five-year plan and didn't like load fifty million dollars worth of street projects into a five-year plan because it's just not realistic. I mean, we know that. So, so we basically pushed, you know, we've been prioritizing the streets. We made it a five-year, more realistic plan and it's twenty-four million dollars. We still can't do twenty-four million, but it's more realistic than the sixty million dollar plan that we've had before us in previous years. FY twenty-one, twenty-two, so the upcoming budget year includes twenty-two project categories with a total estimated cost of about three point seven million dollars. Of that broken down, again, it's the shock value of this part of it, but one point five million dollar motor pool. And that is if we had to go out tomorrow and buy the vehicles. And I wanted to make sure that I was clear in that because that's not what we're really looking at doing. That's what the replacement value of the vehicles that we might, and equipment that we've identified would be. We're looking at financing, either financing options or lease options or, or lease purchase options on vehicles. And so, I, but I wanted to put the number out there, we wanted to put the number out there of what it would actually cost to replace the vehicles tomorrow or next fiscal year if we had to pay cash for them that are based on the condition of the vehicles. I mean, based on the assessment of the vehicles and the lifespan and all that. So again, chief, the chief's looking at it as well as Carolyn and, and Troy, taking a look at options for financing those vehicle replacements, again, lease or, or financing. Actually, all the dealers have, have municipal finance options available that we're really looking hard into. So we're hoping to be able, by the time we get to the budget, we'll be able to bring council the realistic plan for how we're gonna fund a million five next year in vehicle replacements. And if you look at the five-year plan in there, it drops off. Obviously, we're, we're, we're biting the bullet upfront, replacing the vehicles most in need and then it gets into a more realistic, like half million dollar a year replacement program. The streets program, which is a total of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which includes five hundred thousand in MFT, which would go next year towards a local street program and three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for other projects. And those are broken out later on in the plan. And then seven hundred thousand in public facility projects and, and sixty-one five in public safety projects. And then just broken down a little bit further, the public facilities, which is on page five, page twelve. I'm sorry, I wanted to highlight these. Two hundred thousand for onsite salt storage facility at Public Works. And that's actually being mandated to us now. We have a, a letter from, from the IEP that's mandating that we expand or build a salt storage facility based on certain standards, but it's not a million dollar facility. Yeah.
Real quick, is that something we can possibly look at? Can we share that with other municipalities or that just doesn't work in regards to geographically or locally? Or they do put that option out there for us?
Honestly, the volume that we need to store, we need, we need, we need storage for ourselves. There's no one nearby that really has the kind of demand for salt storage that we do. McHenry Township has their own facility, so our, it would be strictly serving our, our needs.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question on that specific one too, is, does it have to be a newly built facility? Can you use existing space of buildings that we have that are vacant where we can lease or rent something? It's not mandated that you build one. It's not mandated that you build one. It's mandate that you have storage, correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, that, that's, that's an option we could look at. Well, you know, what we're looking at is much more limited cost than we've talked about before, but as far as renting space, that's not something that we explore so far. We can't.
I, it was just a thought that came to mind, because I was thinking we have some, some pretty large spaces that are available mainly the real estate market would allow for.
I think you have to look at what that salt does to those buildings as well, being stored inside the corrosion packer. That, you know, you rent in a spot, you can really do some damage to that facility.
You need to height, the height is.
Explain what this facility would be, Troy.
It'd, so it'd be a precast block structure with one of those arch, like a fabric.
Canopies.
Yeah, canopy. And it would be, it would be completely indoor climate controlled. It'd be basically protected from wind and rain, where we get a lot of the, that's where we get a lot of the depreciation of our stockpile and material loss runoff, what have you. So it's, they've become a, a very common storage structure, not just for salt and other construction materials, equipment. And it's probably one of those most cost-effective options we can, we can look at.
What's the height of one of those facilities?
I'd have to, I'd have to follow up on that with the, um, Greg was working on some specifications.
Yeah, it's, the, the whole structure is, it's a hundred feet by sixty-five feet. And at its peak, it's like an arch. At its peak, it's probably thirty feet tall.
And explain the, the mandate part of it.
Yep, so we, we have an MS four permit that we have to maintain through the IEP, which basically are, as, as a city, we have a, a permit through the IEP to discharge stormwater through our, you know, city drainage systems and kind of the city at large. And our last MS four update, we were actually mandated to have the, already have permit salt storage completed. And we never really framed the request in that way, but our, our most recent permit update talks about a timeline that has already since passed, which we have not, they have not come in as strong on us in the doing it, but we, we, we want to take that seriously, and we probably should have been for some time, and, and we are very serious about it now.
All right.
Thanks.
Sorry, public safety projects, basically replacement of our portable, portable radio system. So I'll do those. And then obviously the motor pool, which is detailed in the, in the specific request for that. Street sidewalk and signals breakdown on page thirty, five hundred thousand local street program. We've talked about a couple of these projects over the last couple of meetings. A hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Oakwood Drive, seventy-five from Dervole Road Culver. We want to continue the pavement maintenance program, and then a, a, a contribution towards the Bold Alley Road Multi-Use Path Extension. So you can see that, that those there that I listed, there's others that are identified in year one, but those right there that I listed are three point one, and then five hundred thousand MFT, one forty in non-municipal, a hundred of that is the county, county funding. And that would leave, however we fund it, out of the general fund revenues, which we're still determining what those are going to be next year, or a fund balance of about two point five million dollars for general fund alone projects. Are there any, I want to pause here, because obviously we'll go into different funds. And that was just an overview umbrella of the general fund, but I want to make sure, you know, there's thirty-four projects in the general fund over the five-year period, including twenty-two for next year, and see if there's any other questions or comments that council has about those projects or how they're presented in the plan.
Okay, I'll get started, and I guess basically my, my question is, is how can we even think of this multi-use path extension in the condition that our street system is in? How could we wind up with that type of money in the CIP?
It's a project that we've already committed to.
I understand that, but you, you're talking not just fifty thousand dollars. That's basically, what are you looking at totally over a five-year period?
Go ahead.
And what do you mean it's, it's already been committed to?
So, so we, this project is actually, it was funded in last year's fiscal year budget. We signed an IGA with McHenry County a couple of years ago, and the phase one preliminary engineering has been, has been slow being completed. So our, our plan is actually to, to finish the phase one engineering, actually turn the lead over to McHenry County, and then from there forward, finish phase one. And then I think both parties would rather see it thoroughly can be secured and reduce those local shares to, to where if we do, you know, if we do participate, rather than an eighty-twenty split, we're basically paying twenty percent of the twenty percent remaining. So, you know, a very small share. And so, you know, at this time, the plan is just to finish phase one, turn the lead over to the county. And then once funding has been pursued, make a determination about what our state would be in any future phase two.
If you're looking at fifty thousand dollars the first year, but that's, that's chicken feed compared to what you're talking the next couple of years after.
Yep, but again, that's, right now, that's based upon a twenty percent local match, with the county paying one hundred, like, all eighty percent, and us paying twenty percent locals if there were no better funding being secured. Neither the county or, or we have the intention of pursuing this thing beyond phase two without that funding being secured for those programs that are available, TAP, ITAP, what have you.
I mean, we're, we're still looking at a three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar double on this project in the overall five-year period of ours that we, we wind up paying. And like I said, that takes away from how many streets that we could possibly get. It's great to say that, yeah, we, we need this in our community, we need that in our community, and that in our community, but we're not taking care of our basic problems of the basics of a city. And that means infrastructure as far as sewer and water, and where that's at, streets, drainage, the necessities, rather than the additionals, you know? I don't even want to think about bike paths when we can't even pave the streets we've got. And now we want to build bike paths, and are we going to be looking at ten or fifteen years down the road that we can't even maintain those anymore? You know, let, let's take care of what we've got first, and start maintaining that and catching up before we start expanding on other type of projects that will cost us maintenance in the, in the future. That's my feeling.
Paul Schiffer.
The one thing that I wanted to mention before moving on, and I know this is not a budget document, but a planning document and, and so forth, but the, the one thing that was glaring to me was the lack of seeing anything for the Main Street area, which I thought we had talked about multiple times before of getting more priority on this list. So that was something that was glaring to me, because I didn't see that mentioned anywhere. And that's all I had.
Any others? You talk about parking lots and lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, just as a plan, we already are looking at lighting for parking lots down there right now, within, outside of the capital budget, within our normal budget. So we're working on lighting currently.
Thank you. Any others? Go ahead.
General fund, IT is the next, is the next, and then again, this is not projects outside of the typical general fund dollars. We did a replacement of equipment and software for all municipal departments, except, except waters and sewer. Again, I keep highlighting that, because water and sewer, you know, funds their own, their own projects out of the revenues there. We were able to conduct a cybersecurity audit, as council's aware, we got, we, we were, we got, I don't know what the right terminology was, hit with cyber, a cybersecurity issue last year, were able to deal with. Fortunately, as a result of that, we conducted a cybersecurity audit and identified a number of projects, a number of improvements, that are both cybersecurity worthy and also building hardening security worthy for us. And those are the projects that are identified, most of the projects that are identified in the, in the IT budget, outside of some improvements to this, to this room in terms of council chamber access, that we've already looked at, reducing those, the costs that are even included in this, in this request here. So that number will change significantly before it comes back before council. That's the IT. And by the way, the, the chief is working closely with Aaron. Three, you guys all know Aaron, he's our new IT manager, or not new anymore, Aaron. How long have you been in the position now?
Four months.
Four months. And he's done a great job, I'm glad he's here tonight, because I just wanted to highlight, and the chief can speak about it also. Aaron's done a really, really great job in that position, working with all the departments, talking to all of them individually, and really getting a handle on what the needs are citywide for, for hardware and software and cybersecurity needs. So thanks a lot, Aaron, for all your hard work on that. Chief, anything else on that?
No, I would just, I would just say that Aaron's been able to make some changes to the city to save the city over fifty thousand dollars, just to telephone bills alone for next fiscal year. And he's managed to tackle some contract issues the city's had, that the past two or three people that had his job were not able to. So it's just one, one of the examples of why we made the right choice.
I would keep that recording for your raise.
I have a developer donations fund, it's related to development of new public, public parks or park amenities. I always try to identify fund balance amounts, and here also, the fund balance for the developer donations fund is about nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Requests for FY twenty twenty-one for next year, about three hundred and seventy thousand. That includes a hundred and ninety thousand for Veterans Park, and, and expanding the washroom, just in short, expanding the washroom facilities there in Veterans Park. Knox Park and Merkel Aquatic Center improvements, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Again, those are all outlined in the, the detailed sheets. Forty thousand in improvements to Peterson Park, and fifteen thousand at Peterson Farm next year. And then the fund balance, at least after those projects, without any additional funding in the fund, towards the fund balance, would end at about five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Any specific questions on any of those projects at all, from the project requests? Yeah, I'm just giving the overview here, it's just, I don't want to go through every word of every project unless the council wants, wants us to. The recreation center fund, CIP, the only project that's identified in here, not even a project, but just to keep it in the radar, is should council choose in future years to revisit the referendum question? Just the costs that we identified as part of the expansion from the previous referendum were identified. Just again, keep them on the radar in here, should council, this council or future council choose, choose to move forward with, with that request again. And the estimated beginning fund balance for the recreation center fund for next year is about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. No other projects are identified in that fund. The tourism fund, part of this was identified as part of the Thornton's project that we talked about earlier. We've included gateway signage in here for a number of years. And actually, this is one of the, the errors that I found that I'll change as part of the final document in moving into the budget, because that still includes the five signs. And then actually, with Thornton's agreeing to pay, pay for one of them, that'll take one of them out of the rotation. And one of the things to consider is, is what the speed at which we do those signs. We're going, we'll take a look to see if there's any value in, if we have more than one signed on at one time, does, you know, does it reduce the cost of those? Does it make sense to get more than one at one time, or one a year? And so we'll try to have that information when we come back for the budget. This, this shows a programming of one per year for, for five years, basically. With not paying for one, it would be one a year for four years. But we can find out those, that information coming back as part of the budget also. And I think everybody's gotten back to me on the sign preference also, so I'll get that out, under that out to you from last meeting. The water and sewer fund, again, this is an enterprise fund, which I identified earlier for council. It's a cost service base for operations and capital improvements. So all, all utility maintenance for water and sewer, and all operations costs for water sewer, provision of services comes from the water sewer fund. And so again, when we do the budget, all personnel costs, all improvement costs, all, all vehicle contractual, all those costs for water sewer come from this fund. So from the rates that you pay bi-monthly, and also the base fees that you pay as part of that, go to these type of projects. The current fund balance is about a million dollars. It's important to identify that the five-year CIP includes twenty-nine projects at about thirteen million dollars. And again, these are maintenance projects, not expansion or capacity projects. And the ten-year CIP beyond that is, is another ten million dollars in projects. And so about twenty-three million dollar water sewer utility projects. For next year, we're looking at about seventeen projects at a million, at one, a million three. And one of the things that is identified here is we really need to take a hard, as much as I hate to say it, the fact is that we really need to take a hard look at both the rates. We, you know, we've committed to looking at rates every year as it relates to operating costs, and making adjustments to rates. And over the last couple of years, they've gone down some, they've gone up some, based on where the, where the budgets come in at for those funds. But the harder discussion is going to be the base fees that we require for improvements, for maintenance improvements. Because, and Carolyn knows the exact numbers, but I want to say that the water base rate of two dollars brings in, what, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year? So when you get your bill, when you pay the two dollars every other month for a base fee for water, that's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. And the base fee for sewer of four dollars brings in about two hundred thousand dollars a year?
About, yeah.
About two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars a year. And a hundred and twenty-five of water, and two hundred thousand in sewer, you're going to cut it for twenty-three million dollars of improvements that we're going to need in the water sewer fund over the next ten years. And we'll, again, we'll get a better handle on that as we do our community investment plan. And we don't, I know we don't want to talk about, or don't like to talk about, you know, having to adjust base fees for water and sewer, especially because we have a twenty, thirty million dollars SRF loan that we're also paying, that residents are paying on, on top of the two and four dollar base fees. But that's a discussion we're going to have to have sooner than later on, what we do with those base fees to pay for these utility maintenance costs. And it really plays into a discussion also back to the general fund. You know, we get into the budget process of, you know, we're, we're, we're taking a hard look as staff, looking at contracting services, reducing operating costs, you know, where we can get more bank for a buck out of the money that we already get in, in the general fund for, for projects. But we're going to have to keep looking at how we can generate new revenues in the general fund to be able to pay for the projects, and that also, I hated to regruss, but I needed to say that also. The TIF fund on pages a hundred and six to a hundred and thirteen. The TIF expires in twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty-three years seem like a long time back in, what, twenty-two thousand and two?
Yeah, I don't.
But, but the time has flown, and we're within five years of the TIF district expiring. Mainly from the recession, we've been, we've been underwater with the TIF fund for years in terms of making enough money out of the TIF, or generating enough revenues out of the TIF to pay for bonds that are outstanding. And we finally were able to turn the corner last year and this year, and see positive, positive generation of that tax increment in the TIF. And, and certainly we can use that to pay down, you know, the debt sooner and things like that. Um, and, uh, and certainly we can use that to pay down, you know, the debt sooner and things like that in the TIFF. But, you know, as it relates to things, Alderman Schaefer, like improvements in the downtown, um, you know, I don't know, there's still millions and millions of dollars of those improvements in the downtown that we want to make. Like if you've driven through downtown AlGakone lately, you know, the type of streetscape and lighting improvements and other improvements that they've made are all the types of things that are included in our TIFF redevelopment plan, maybe not specifically, but those types of projects. And, um, you know, if we're looking at keeping, continually making improvements to the downtown areas, it's either going to come from general fund dollars, which means that they have to compete with roads and vehicles and equipment, which we know where that decision is going to go, it's going to go with roads first. Or it's going to come out of the, out of the TIFF, out of the, the tax increment. And with five years left, I'm not sure how much tax increment we're going to be able to put towards it. I mean, we'll obviously will, um, but something that we brought up in the past that we'll, again, have a discussion at, at the council level is whether or not we go through the process of requesting an extension of the TIFF. It's a, uh, a twelve-year extension that we can ask for. And, um, you know, I know Carolyn and Bill have started putting together numbers for what that would look like. Um, and we'll bring that to council as a discussion item because, uh, because that'll take some doing if, if that's a, a decision the council wants to make moving forward with that.
We, we did talk about that a year ago too. Is there a timeframe requirement, like that's, we have to get under a certain date timeframe, do you know of?
Before the expiration of this one.
Yeah. That's it? There's nothing, really? Okay.
And it seems to be pretty straightforward, not, it's not an overly involved process, if we're not changing anything at all other than the, other than the potential extension. And that, and the caveat to the extension also, uh, we'll talk more about it at, at some point, but we can end it at any point. But we can, you can only extend it for maximum of twelve. But you, we could say, you know, if we've accomplished the goals that we want to accomplish, we're ending the thing. Just like we could have with.
Yeah, you know, a place to start with council is probably, my, my recommendation is, you know, take another look at, take another look at the TIFF redevelopment plan. I mean, again, it's twenty years old now and see what projects in there we've completed, what projects in there are still desirable by the city council. You know, estimate some costs, uh, what the, what that would be. And then see, you know, based on estimates on what the TIFF is going to generate in the next five years, you know, are we going to be able to accomplish those things or not? And then that gives us a base, you know, more information rather than just saying, well, let's just go extend it. I mean, it gives us some more, uh, financial or more goal-specific information that we can use as an analysis instead of just extending it.
Yes, I'd just say there's two, two things to keep in mind is any redevelopments that happen downtown, if they come forward, a project comes forward and they say, we, we need this TIFF assistance. You know, that's something that, um, you know, we have a baseline, we have the projects, the public projects that we want to include. So it could be the best project, but it needs to be repaid over a certain amount of time. And we do have some very desirable redevelopment sites that are within our downtown or in, within our TIFF district. And the second thing is things that we don't see that maybe they're in that plan. You know, the Millstream Lift Station, uh, an extension of that main is a perfect example, it's a public improvement. The TIFF dollars could be applied to, it would be, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to come from a water sewer fund. If that money is there, that's a public improvement that could be utilized as a funding source. So sometimes it's not just the aesthetics, the streetscapes, the Riverwalk, um, those type of things. It's any, any public improvement that we certainly have some that, and, and the nice thing was, was established, it was a, a pretty good, pretty good sized area that we could, uh, kind of tackle with, with those dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's, that's the TIFF Fund and, and that's all the funds I've gone through. So we can certainly go back, talk to what any of them are, or piecemeal through any of these, any questions that council may have. Um, you know, again, we'll, um, we'll bring it back before council, we can have more discussion about it, uh, as part of an adoption process. But more specifically, once we get into the budget process, that's what we're really talking about, being able to fund projects or not. This is again, mainly identifies what those needs are, doesn't allocate the funds towards them.
As far as an extension on the TIFF Fund though, uh, is it not the, uh, all the other entities have to agree to it?
It's exactly what it is.
We can't just dictate it ourselves.
Well, we can't.
That's what I figured, I figured that.
We'll be getting those, uh, conversations with the taxing bodies.
Well, maybe those conversations should be done in an open meeting at, at a city council meeting, rather than behind closed doors on all of them. As long as we're going to discuss expanding it sometime, then maybe that's when we talk with all the other, uh, government entities as a whole. No reason why we shouldn't talk about it out in the public with, with everybody, rather than behind any closed doors on that.
Well, there have to be, I mean, I don't, I don't know the exact process, but there was certainly, there's probably public hearings that are part of it, right? Bill, moving forward for some sort of.
Not necessarily initially that I was presented from our city attorney, that if we're not changing anything, we just need, we need their, basically their approval.
Well, again, you, you realize that if we do a TIFF project, it, it is increasing everybody's taxes, not dramatically, but true. Don't tell me it's not true, I understand TIFF, I have, I had before it was ever created.
It's not true.
Okay, well, you know what, you can have your opinion and I've got my facts, so let's leave it at that. I'm not going to argue what you had a council meeting about it.
Alman Shaffer.
No, one, one of your first statements, Alman Glad, regards to getting these, uh, taxing bodies in front of us. And I think there, there needs to be some formal or informal invite to spoke, to, you know, discussions in regards to making the request. We'd like to have you appear in front of us to have a discussion. And we put the wall near court and we tell them, yeah, we want to have this discussion. You know, and we do, at, at some point, we, we do want to have it, we do want to have a public discussion on, on something like this. And it, it makes all the sense in the world, but we got to, you know, I, I understand.
Who are you asking to come to the meeting, the superintendents?
No, I would.
Because they don't make the decisions, so I mean.
Well.
It's a board.
It's a board, sorry.
It's a board, okay, well, so we need to get that message to them and, and they can bring a representative, just like we could bring a representative to a meeting too. Now, it's not going to be the decision made by that one person, but they're going to come back with what we've made the request of and see where it goes. I, I, you know, I can see that, I can see some kind of, you know, discussion. I don't know if it's a quote official hearing, but I can see that, um, that we do something in that form. If it gets to that point, you know, we might get a lot of thanks, but no thanks. On the, uh, even a phone call to make a discussion. We don't know, we don't know. And, uh, there's one way of finding out. Uh, the other point I wanted to make is that this presentation tonight, it's a working plan, it has adjustments, we go on and on, we make, uh, we're going to make adjustments until we, you know, finalize things, especially for, uh, a budget that comes up at the end of April. Uh, that being said, uh, staff is on hand, they're here, they, they work for us. If any of the council members have questions or need discussions, I beg them to please, uh, reach out to them. Uh, phone calls, face-to-face, what have you, they're there for us. And, uh, they're definitely, uh, very helpful in regards to working with us and doing research and, uh, getting us information as we, as we need it, as we go into, uh, work, uh, as we go on working on this document. Thanks.
Alman Shaffer.
Going back to the TIFF thing too, I, it probably makes sense for this council to make a decision. If, if this council is not approving going forward with an extension, there's no reason to bring anybody else in first. So I think that's, that's what's got to happen first. We have to decide if we're going to go forward with it and then we can have those. So I mean, that could start at any point, so.
We'll bring it back for discussion at that point and I will certainly reach out to the superintendents and, you know, ask for them to be here. But once again, they don't make those decisions, so.
Understood.
All right. Any others, questions, comments? All right, thanks Derek, thank you staff.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh, next item on the agenda is staff reports, anything?
No.
I have nothing, city council comments? All right, uh, motion to adjourn? Alman Shaffer.
I'll let the motion.
Second? Alman Shaffer, second.
All right, let's call it off.
Alman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alman Glad?
Yes.
Alman Hardy?
Yes.
Alman Hibbit?
Yes.
Alman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alman DeMai? Sir.
She said it twice.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Alman Curry?
I'm sorry.